That are at issue here. One is employees who the employers would like to be able to hire and keep who can't afford to live nearby. And the other is people that are willing to be on fire department and so forth and other key people they have nearby somehow having a volunteer fire department that all lives in Seaside or Mantonia or someplace that wasn't working long. And I don't remember whether the person who wrote the letter had these suggestions, but my response to it was, hey, you know, that, uh, why is it that it's our problem rather than the employer's problem to arrange for housing for their, uh, for their employees? I understand that if they do that, they're going to have to raise their prices and that we would like to have those businesses be successful here and so forth. But this is a matter of where are you moving the cost? And it's, I can certainly be convinced that the way we're going at it is right, but it's not, I think it's something that I would need to be convinced of. And that I think that, looking at it that way also, you could make a case for offering a salary supplement to people in key positions like volunteers for fire rescue and probably a few others that you would really like to have living in the community so that they can get to the places that they want to be by offering a salary supplement in order for them to do that. And I'm guessing that somebody had brought this up somewhere along the process and chewed it over and arrived at the recommendations that we have proposed.
Well, the discussion, I can respond somewhat to that. The discussion with the Affordable Housing Plan that was carried on by a committee at the city council level, and I'm grossly simplifying and summarizing here, did touch on that. You know, why are we responsible for solving a problem that exists for major employers in this town? And you mentioned one reason, we all benefit by having a healthy economy here, so there's certainly statements in the comprehensive plan that would support that. The other half of that is, you're right, it's not our obligation to solve that, but we may want to look at our codes and see if we've put in some obstructions or roadblocks that make it harder for them to solve that problem. And so I think those two legs of that argument were made in various ways, in both on the steering committee for the Affordable Housing Plan and with the city council. That doesn't solve, that doesn't address the entirety of the question, you know, who really is responsible here? It just doesn't. But in terms of the city's obligations, we do have a, the city does have statements in its plan and the general policy approach that we all benefit from having a healthy economy here and that we don't want obstructions in our own regulatory system to make it even more difficult for an employer who does want to step up and provide housing for his or her employees or just housing for that market segment. We don't want to be standing in the way of that through our regulatory system either wittingly or unwittingly. So those are the two things that come to mind in response to that.
And I, it seems like if you then remove those roadblocks, then you make it more realistic for policemen and firemen and so forth to be able to afford.
Yeah, that's, if you do, if you do decide that there are some roadblocks or impediments and we remove them, I don't know, that doesn't guarantee that that housing gets built, but at least we're not in the position of standing in the way of it being built. And yeah, if those are real impediments and that housing gets built aimed at that market segment, presumably that does alleviate some of the problems for, say, emergency service responders or for just employment, employee housing.
Could I ask why a Martin Hospitality or whatever the name is, went through their option to build over there?
They had gone, actually, they actually had the building permit in hand and decided that the cost per square foot or per unit was the gap between the rent they could charge and the cost of getting those units on the ground was just too big. That's what they told me. So they went pretty far down the road in terms of design, all the way to thick roll plans ready to be approved and they pulled the plug on it and said, we're not going to do it.
Are there significant ways, taking that as a, I'm trying to think of what you call it in a college seminar, taking that as a, as an example case, are there roadblocks that we could recommend being removed that would might well have made them a reasonable conclusion?
Yeah, I haven't thought that through in those terms, kind of as a case study.
Yeah, that's right.
That was, you know, they did get approval, but that was not an easy path for approval, but I'm not, I'm not sure that they faced any significant regulatory obstacles.
For example, and I, I just read over this and it wasn't the last meeting, one of the restrictions starting out was to raise from two stories to three stories.
Yeah.
And that, maybe that might have impacted their costs?
It's conceivable, you know, a per unit, the per unit cost for a three-story building might have been less than it was for a two-story building. They never broached that with me, so I just don't know whether the cost problems were regulatory or just based on their own accounting.
Remind me, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And the same question with the parking spaces, if you relaxed the number of offered parking spaces.
Yeah, it's conceivable that that was a factor, but I should say that Martin Hospitality never mentioned those as factors that caused them to withdraw. They just said the per unit construction costs, the gap between the per unit construction costs and what they could charge their employees for rent for those units was just too big.
Because their paychecks were too small.
That's the other way of looking at it, yes.
Remind me what the zoning is across the street.
That's C1 Limited Commercial.
Do we want to, I don't have a feel for how much more people have than they would like to say on this, and I'm still looking, maybe ahead, past whatever discussion you have, does it seem like we want to move this to public hearings, probably in January?
Yeah, there's a 30-day notice requirement for the LCD, so January would be the earliest we could actually entertain this at a hearing.
And we probably would want to be having it right before Christmas, and we've already decided to be off on it.
Your December agenda's already set. That meeting, the December meeting's on the 19th, the January meeting's the 25th, and that there'd be enough time. If you were interested in having this as a hearing before you, we could get it advertised and on that agenda, January 25th.
Sounds good.
That sounds great.
What are your general questions? And that, that is, looking at these maps, it's one thing, you know, this is R3, this one here, but it would be nice also to know what percentage of the R3 zones that have been targeted here already have resident housing money.
I can get to that information, I don't have it in front of me tonight.
How many lots are we talking about?
Yeah, I can get a lot count on an acreage estimate for, for R3 zoning, what's built and what's vacant.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's doable.
I would appreciate it if you'd go back to Martin Hospitality and ask them if this, what caused them to not build and if there was something within the city regulations that they would have been encouraged to go on, go forward on.
I will, I'll also alert them that you're, are looking at this as a hearing item, so if they, I'll ask them directly, but they can also address you directly as testimony too, so I'll give them both those options.
Building costs are high, and that could be just what it is.
Yeah.
It's hard to get people to show up and build things.
There again, a lot of people have left the business because of our problem with the recession, yeah, and retirement.
It looks like you're still leaving through there, but you might need to hold this up for another week or two.
In principle, unresistant to this kind of change of the comprehensive plan, which doesn't mean that I'm opposed to exceptions, because I think the idea of, let's have an ordinance that opens up all this, all this space that is R3 to 32-foot roof lines and results kind of dubious, one-shot parking stories. I think we would be better off arranging, facilitating exceptions to what's already in the comprehensive code for R3 and make it clear that there are conditions for acceptances, people accept the exceptions, alterations or variances. There ain't that much more land left in Cannon Beach, and I don't know, I don't know the revenue that would come from workforce housing as opposed to corporate pleasure palaces. But those R3 areas are some of the only land that could accommodate larger kinds of houses and still stay within the parameters of the comprehensive code in terms of working and height and so forth. So I don't, I don't see why we should rush into a blanket kind of change in what can happen in R3.
Do you want to look at some, some alterations to the criteria you have for granting, for instance, site protections and variances?
Well, at the last meeting, Ryan Moore was talking about looking at parking in seemingly workplace, workforce, workers area, and I'm not sure that how many cars you find that eat at park at night is a good measure of what's going on there after midnight or eight in the morning or whatever. I don't, I don't think that sort of stop action kind of image of what's there is a good way of determining that we only 8.65 per studio as opposed to one. I'm not sure. As far as the height or extension goes, I think there are ways and they haven't used already to keep things under 28 feet and still get three stories. It's been, I have lots of questions about the need for doing this, the financing of it, who's going to be, who's going to be stuck with the bill, who's going to be lured into doing anything if there's not a subsidy or something.
Well, we do have, the council has passed a Affordable Housing surcharge on building permits, and there is a mechanism for us to weigh systems development charges and portions of the building permit fee for qualifying housing. Now, we actually haven't done that yet, so I can't give you too many details about how that's going because all we've done is collect the tax, we actually haven't spent any of it yet. But there is a mechanism for a small upfront subsidy in terms of alleviating some of the building permit fees on those units. Doesn't answer your broader question.
And the expense of other people.
Yes, yeah. So it doesn't answer the broader question about how these are financed, and it's in the big scheme of things, it's a relatively small subsidy, but it is there.
Joe's like, well, this leads me to a question, and that is, has anybody introduced into this discussion what, how things are different from how they were in the past? I assume that this has been a problem to some extent all along. Has it gotten worse for some reason? And if so, for what reason have people decided, well, my gosh, it's time to fix this?
You can, you know, pick any five people and come up with five different reasons about why it's different this time than it might, than it was last time, or why it's exactly the same as it was last time. I don't have the answer for that myself. There just is a feeling at the council level certainly that affordable housing is a consistent or chronic problem here that does need at least some city attention, and that's caused the council to put that high on their priority list every year that I've worked here the last five years, plus do things like the Affordable Housing Study, this Affordable Housing Surcharge, the other things I've mentioned. So I don't know if this is a different problem than we've experienced in the past or a more severe version of the same problem or, or what, but it is high on the council's radar right now and has been for the last several years.
Well, there's been, you know, infill, there's been a rise in land values, there are all kinds, you know, construction costs, there are all kinds of reasons that we can't get much for $300,000 and we can't be short again. And a lot of it's just with the market, you know? And the market may always have been higher relative to Rockaway, not to pick on Rockaway, but it's also getting tighter and tighter and more and more difficult, which is also one of the reasons why I question taking these R3s and opening them up to multi-pleasantries. I think that that land is going to be increasingly valuable and attractive to people who want to move here and become part of what really is a retired community, maybe to a lesser extent, and however many months the Chamber of Commerce can push commerce and tourism I just think it's a big rush and it's not been thought through very well. There's such a, you know, a gee whiz, we need to have affordable housing, which would be attractive, I suppose, but I'm not sure it's realistic. I'm not sure the financing involved makes any sense whatsoever. I don't think you got to do it by transferring the cost to people who actually invested in building their own homes.
Well, then we do have a project already going on in the RV part, and I kind of go along with Joe thinking I'd like to see, give it some time, see what happens there and how that works. I also feel that a three-story could, could be, what is it, seven and a half feet is what's required for a height of the ceiling, so couldn't that be worked in a little bit better?
Well, there's also, you know, garden-level apartments as well. I think there's a number of ways you could cheat 28 feet.
I know of one in Arch Street.
I didn't end up driving around and looking at all of the R3 zones today, but I drove around enough that I, oh, okay, this house is really three-story, and those guy's house is really three-story. These are, I, I need names, but it doesn't matter. The point is, if you start going around looking for them, it's not that hard to find.
And we have seen some that, you know, are in violation of the code when they were built, you know, that come before us, you know, seeking even more violations. But there are, there are, Telavon up and down Emlock, there's a complex that, there's a three-story complex that seems to be under 28 feet or 28 feet or something. So I think there's, I think there are ways of doing it. You know, Jack and Pike and heavy buildings that, I'm going to interfere with, look at Cannon Beach, you know, all along the south end of 101 and 102, which is a big R3 area.
Are we ready to move on and hear what other people have to say before we continue our discussion of this?
Yes.
Okay, let's move ahead to, so we, so we are, we're asking you to advertise that for January.
Will do.
Okay, thanks for your consideration.
This also is a continuation of a work session from last month. The impetus for the work session was a letter you received from Joe Balden, who's an arborist who at one point worked for the city and now is an independent arborist who works for several clients in town, including the city. A copy of that letter is attached in your packet. Joe wasn't available at the prior meeting, but he is available tonight. I asked him to come and walk you through his concerns, the concerns he raised in the letter. There've also been some, there was some general discussion at the last meeting about this too, but you really didn't reach any conclusions. This is the same question. If you have a discussion, you want to, if you identify some sort of code fix for the problems that Mr. Balden's raised, same schedule, couldn't get it on December, but we could get it on January if that's what you would like to see.
When you were saying that it's in a package, is that what was put out a week ago or has something else come out?
It came, I put it in both of them. The letter's dated September 21st and it's, it's Attachment A in the current packet, but I believe it was in.
I don't think I got that.
I believe it was in the prior packet also.
I'll work and see if this arrived since.
It says your number four.
Do you have that?
Second page, I have four.
I took my notebook home with me last month, so I wouldn't, should it be in there?
This letter I can.
I remember it, I figured it would be useful.
I can run off copies if, you've got yours.
Should there be a copy over in my mailbox up there?
Probably is. It should have been in your packet, so.
Wasn't it when I got, unless I somehow lost my versions, now I don't know.
You may have reshuffled it.
Okay, anything before we ask Mr. Balden to speak to this?
A lot of this may devolve into sort of questions about how we administratively handle tree permits, with the notable exception of that appeal that came to you two months ago, was withdrawn at the 11th hour.
Oh, yeah.
You normally don't see what's going on with tree removal permits. It's 99 out of 100 of them are handled administratively and don't really get beyond that. So if, in the course of this discussion, if you need kind of a primer on how we handle that administratively, I'd be happy to provide it.
Mr. Balden?
Thank you. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Joe Balden. I'm a consulting arborist. My company is Balden Arbicultural Services. My home and office is 41-500 Anderson Road in Haylam.
This is good enough.
Oh, okay. And I've been involved with, in the world of agriculture for quite a while. I was a staff arborist here, early 90s, and I retired from city work, 2003, to just run my own consulting business. I am an independent consultant, I'm not a contractor, and in fact, I am the only independent consulting arborist on the northern coast. Will Kaplenger also is a consulting arborist, and he now works for Quetzalcoatl. I guess the main reason I wanted to, well, thank, thanking Mark for inviting me, first off, this, the September letter that you're referring to, I, I've got two other letters here, but they're not that particular date. Is there anything in particular that needs to be addressed on that letter? If not, let me just talk to about some other things. I've been contacted by the Public Works Department, city staff, the Jim Art and then his assistant, Karen, to do all of the tree evaluations and reviews for the Public Works Department, primarily to be a little more efficient time-wise, and these are trees on public property, not private property. When I was a staff arborist, I covered everything, including private property, and even now, one example I'd like to give you, in terms of tree protection and tree retention, I worked with architects, builders, and the homeowners in terms of what trees might need to be removed and what can be retained on site. And, you know, we're a Tree City USA, and I was responsible for the initial Tree City USA back in 1994. For various reasons, the city decided to discontinue the application for Tree City USA about, oh, 2000, 2001, something like that. And we have to credit Jan Warman here in the audience for being the impetus in getting Cannon Beach to become a Tree City USA once again. I'm really glad to, you know, be involved with that. And in terms of being a Tree City USA, the first directive really is to take care of and preserve the trees that we have, and removing a tree is secondary. There are so many reasons or techniques for preserving trees, and not very many tree service companies are aware of this. You know, I, as a certified arborist, you know, I have to accumulate 30 continuing ed credits in a three-year cycle, and that's a recertification cycle. I've been doing that for a long time. I've gone to a lot of clinics and workshops and, you know, I keep up with the trends and the. I've gone to a lot of clinics and workshops and, you know, I keep up with the trends in the industry. Most, not to be critical of the tree contractors in the area, but most of them really are not that well-qualified to do a good evaluation on, on a tree, thinking of preservation as what you want to do first, rather than looking at a tree as a dollar sign and if we take it out, it make a thousand bucks. So that's, you know, one of the issues at hand. You guys, you mentioned the Gokana appeal. I should address that just briefly. And that's the first time I've ever seen an appeal to a tree removal in the city of Cannon Beach. And the, the real crux of the issue is, once a hazard has been identified, the hazard has to be alleviated in one manner or another. And that's really spelled out quite clearly in the, in the tree removal application. Pruning will not solve the problem, then next thing is removing the tree. And once the hazard is identified, you cannot appeal a hazard, you have to deal with the hazard, especially on public property, because if the, the law is, once a hazard is identified, a reasonable effort, that's the key phrase, has to be made to alleviate the problem. And that doesn't mean litigation and, you know, going on and on. And, you know, in this instance, you have a 30-foot tree 20 feet from a house. If that tree blew down and did damage to the property and nothing was done, well, there's, you know, city liability would have been involved. And that's an extreme, and like I say, it's, it's the only situation that's occurred in my experience, you know, in 20-some years in the, in the industry. I could go on and on, but the goal here is to, you know, make the process as efficient as possible, you know, least expense, you know, to, to the city, and just smooth things out a little bit. So, you know, I don't want to talk, I want to let you guys ask questions of me. Mike?
What do you recommend? Within, within the past year or so, we've made some changes to the sections of our ordinance related to tree removal and replanting and so forth. I, I was sort of, particularly trying to refresh my recollection about this letter, but it seemed to me that you had written a letter to the city and perhaps to us, which is like in this case, the Public Works Staff. And I was thinking that you had some recommendations of ways that we should do things differently, that we should revisit our, our changes to our ordinance.
No, not specifically. There's only one little criteria in the tree removal application that I, I would like to address. I don't know where is it here. Just a minute. Oh, it's the necessity to remove a tree for health and vigor of the surrounding trees
Is that part of the ordinance I brought?
No, it's in the tree removal application.
Oh, well, that's right, you said that.
It's in the ordinance also.
Yeah, it's in the ordinance, but it's, what I'm trying to find here, it said it did not require an arborist review. But I don't see that on this particular application. Missing something here?
It requires an arborist's review for removal.
Yeah, the only thing that doesn't require an arborist's review would be a dead tree or a tree within the footprint of the building.
Right.
Or a building permit's been issued.
Right. All right, anyway, we'll pass on that. One of the things, I guess, for me personally, is when I left City Employment, I wasn't working full-time. I had a place down in Arizona. I was spending winters down there. I've sold that property and I'm here full-time. But when I was gone, there was a need to have somebody, you know, follow up on evaluations, you know, done by contractors, and so Will Kaplenger was hired to work for the city. And I'm not being critical of Will, but I just think I can do a better job. And the reason for that, I'm saying that, is have there been any contractor tree removal applications reviewed and then denied? And that would be something that Mark's staff would have to look at.
Can you think of any examples?
Yes, but there, it's a, a small number. One or two a year perhaps out of several dozen approvals. So it happens, but it's infrequent.
Okay, well, the reason I bring that up.
Does it seem to you that things should be ordered in such a way that it would be more likely that things would be denied, that would be, we'd be able to discover ways of dealing with trees that seem like they might be hazards and not have to take them out?
Yeah, that's, you know, kind of coming back to what I say, working with the builders, the homeowners and the architects. And that is, in my experience, and that's what I'm still doing, is in, in conversation with the owner, whoever else is involved in the particular tree, I find more ways to save a tree than take it out. Therefore, there is no tree removal application necessary. So we're kind of skipping that whole step. And the expense to the, the city for the review would be negated because, you know, a tree removal application for up to four trees is, what, 50 bucks? And that's not a whole lot of money, you know, to handle all of this administratively. So this is where this whole thing of tree preservation, you know, that's got to be the focus, rather than how we handle removals. That's how I approach it.
Is there anything that you could recommend to us that we can do to, to advance what you're in favor of there?
Well, I don't know. I mean, you make a recommendation to staff, I suppose, in my favor, you know. I'm at the two at my own harm, but this is what the Public Works Department, they want, we're negotiating a three-year contract for me to handle all the, all the public trees. And meet with staff, I did a tour with Kirk Anderson, who heads the Parks Department a week ago. We went through the parks and the parking lots and everything else. And I made recommendations, you know, this needs to be done, this needs to be done. And this is all, a lot of this is what staff can do in the winter time. And, you know, there's some areas that just need improvement. He needed some guidance. He appreciated my input, because we used, we worked together, you know, for a year and a half before I retired. So that worked out really well. And I enjoy, I enjoy doing that. I still teach pruning clinics for the master gardeners, stuff like that, so, you know, tree sap's in my blood. Just like Jan.
One of the things Joe and I talked about, and I, I think Joe said this, but I, I mean, kind of rephrase it from my point of view. The way this works now on a public tree, a tree that's in right-of-way or on property we own, is that the Public Works Department would hire an arborist, might be Joe, might have been somebody else, fill out the tree removal permit, and we would hire another arborist, Will Kaplenger in this case, to review it and make a decision and either approve it or not approve it. If, one of the things Joe and I talked about was, if, if the city contracts with an arborist exclusively for the public works part of this, just the public side of this, this program, does, do we need to contract for a second arborist to validate the first arborist's work, since they're both kind of our contractors at that point? My gut feeling is probably not. So that's, that's a possible way of, of, at least, I don't know if that really streamlines, it does streamline things a bit, and it certainly lowers the city's costs, because the costs of the program far exceed its revenues. And that's not our guiding philosophy on everything, that the revenues need to exceed costs, but in this case, there really is a, that program by itself runs a pretty big deficit. So that is a way of stream, lowering the costs and streamlining that half of the program. It's not half, it's probably less than a quarter of all permits.
One part of it's efficiency, timing. When Will has to review an application, he can only come down on the weekends because he has a full-time job in the county.
Yeah, well, typically, we scan and email the applications to Will during the week, and he turns them around, gives us reports on the following Monday. Sometimes that gets delayed to a, two Mondays down the road, depending on things, but that's how it typically works, both on the public and private side. The top, the, the fix that I, the, the change that I talked about on the public side would not require any code amendment. That's a, that's a procedure that the city manager implemented early on when I came here. It wasn't brand, it was Rich May's, and we've just been following it ever since. And I don't want to say it worked seamlessly and smoothly, but it, it does work for us.
Well, the one major change that was done, what, about last February or March, was the notification to the public, public, publicly-owned trees, modifying more property owners.
That was one of the changes that you adopted last year.
I thank you for coming and speaking to us. I, unless somebody's got some more questions, I'm not sure that, that we have something more to do with this.
Yeah, I, I don't hear any code amendments bubbling to the surface here. I'm not sure where you, where you want to go with this. We can, if you want to expand this discussion to other arborists, you could. It's your call.
I'm not eager to do that at the moment.
Okay, just push this on to the back burner and?
Yeah, if somebody, if something, if someone gives an impetus to, to do that, I quickly could certainly.
Well, if the Public Works Department does contract with an arborist exclusively, whether it's Joe or somebody else, that may generate some changes from their point of view, because they've dealt with the, you know, they have some new staff people, they've dealt with a number of kind of hazard trees recently, and I know that Jim Art, Public Works Director, is kind of forming some opinions about how this might be handled a little bit differently than it is now. So maybe as the, the winter wears on and everybody gets their legs under along that side of the business, you will hear some proposal for something more concrete as an amendment.
Okay, so that they come from Jim?
It could come from Jim or some other route like that, yes.
We had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning that Karen Ziallo, she was supposed to be part of the discussion, so it's been put off for a week or so, so we'll have something put together. The whole thing, like I say, the whole thing for me is, is, you know, streamlining the operation, being more efficient, and preserving more trees. That's the goal.
I don't think that way is going to fight you on those.
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Let's see. Probably, ah, tree report.
Should be the last page of your packet. Table looks like that.
I might have mentioned, if you look down Denise Jackson Street, that's my backyard. I went to, went to France, they cut the tree down. There was one, two trees, and one was leaning, similar tree last year, neighbors duplex, neighbor's short tail, missed the house.
We had a.
I still have a nine-quarter stain.
We had a street tree fall down in the wind this afternoon on Elliot, damaged a house. This is, this is this time of year, you know, the first big blows of the year, wet soil and everything, that's when this happens.
So if, if someone, or several people, suggests that the city should look at amending the existence of a given tree in a public way, and the city comes out and says, no, it's fine, you know, and it falls down on somebody's house, vehicle, person, whatever, next minute, the city liable at that point?
The city has insurance for that kind of thing. I, I would assume that there must be some liability there, but I honestly don't know how that pans out. If there definitely is, you know, that question comes up in terms of insurance and liability, so I assume that there's some, some truth there.
Okay, I'm going to.
Your next meeting is in December on an off day, the 19th.
Will it be raining that day?
Huh?
Will it be raining that day?
I can almost guarantee it.
Jan?
Should I come up? Jan Seibert-Worman, if this is mine, you know who I am, P.O., Box 778. I just wanted to bring up a thing about a tree, and that is, well, first of all, I wanted to say, in regard to what Joe said about me with the Tree City USA, Barb Knopf is really the one who's been really working hard on the application every year, and also just the support of all the Cannon Beach friends of the trees. So it's not just me, it's the whole kit and kaboodle. Okay, so the tree that was, I, I understood there was a tree that fell down, I think it was Monday morning, the huge shore pine on the S-curves. And then someone brought it up today at the Public Works, I think maybe Carolyn did, at the Public Works meeting, that this tree had come down. I think it was actually taken down, am I correct, that the city actually took?
That's what it sounded like.
Yes, the, the city, it was, it moved over the weekend, and so the city took it down Monday morning.
Right, so I know a number of us had gone over after a Parks meeting several weeks ago, because people were concerned at that time, that through construction of a new home on this very, you know, pardon, you know where it is, that the, that the excavation that was done there had severely damaged the root system of that large tree. So what I'm concerned about, I think maybe other people here are as well, how do we, how do we deal with this? Because these trees are iconic for our area. We are losing them every, you know, every few months, we're losing these, and we need to make sure, just like what Joe said tonight, that the trees are treated with respect and that they are preserved, not just damaged and then thrown away, basically. So how can we, in our tree ordinance and what we're doing with the city overall, make sure that if something like this happens, and I would even like to look into this, I don't know how the process would go, but I would like to really look into what happened with this tree, because I think it was Jim's understanding, and he's, of course, knew that, you know, this had been going on for years with that tree. But I think maybe what he doesn't realize is that the severity of that But I think maybe what he doesn't realize is that the severity of that leaning and, you know, what happened with the tree just recently was a lot to do with the excavation. And so whoever did the excavation, in my view, needs to be held responsible in some way. And we can't just pretend that it's not, you know, it's not, those people are not responsible for that tree being absolutely, basically trashed. So I'd like to ask for everybody's help. I don't know how to do it, but we just need your help. And I think we need to use this as an example for the future because if people get away with this kind of thing, it just, it just ruins our community, and we can't let that happen.
It seems to be, and I take the time to go back through the ordinance, that if, if you are making, if you are planning building a building, and if there's a tree there, then the, the city will, at least my impression either from that or from talking to my neighbor who is now building a house behind me, that the, the city will work with the, the owner to, to try to preserve trees, but that basically if you want to build that house on that lot and you have to take some trees down to do it, that's a sufficient reason for, for taking a tree down. Am I remembering this correctly?
That's essentially it. I mean, we issue, that's the one, one of the tree removal permits you can get without an arborist report within the footprint of your foundation. Now, that said, we typically have a discussion with somebody, you know, particularly if it's a larger tree. Can't this house be slid this way some distance, or that way some distance? And occasionally that yields results, but not often because particularly on these fifty by a hundred lots, which is the vast majority of the lots in this city, these people are building to setbacks in all dimensions. They're building the largest house they can. And, you know, the discussion ends there. There's no place to slide this foundation one way or the other. So, yeah, typically, when it's within the foundation, we ask if it's possible to move it, or is it possible to modify the foundation or do something with the tree roots here to preserve that tree. Occasionally it yields fruit, but not often. That, occasionally, that discussion extends sometimes outside of the footprint because the roots are damaged by excavation. Often we'll get a call from a contractor and say, hey, that, that tree was a good fifteen feet away from the foundation, but when we excavated the trench, we cut through some huge roots there. And we'll say, you need to get an arborist over there, evaluate the situation, see if the tree can be saved. If it can, they do what they need to. And sometimes there's some, I think they call it root pruning that you can do. It depends on whether you're on the windward side or not, but sometimes there's a way of saving it. Other times, they say, no, you weakened that tree to the point where it now already is a hazard, even if it was healthy before. So that's the way that typically goes, that discussion typically goes on building permit.
I was going to bring up the, the construction that's going on there.
Mm-hmm.
I've been watching. I, I go down and pick up the mail at the post office. It's something going around the S-curves, and I've sort of been watching it developing. And I didn't get out and tape measure it, but is that structure fifteen feet away from the relatives?
Yeah, they didn't have any relief for setbacks, so they meet their setbacks. In that case, they're fifteen feet front and rear. They're front of the...
Right.
I can't think of the name of the street. Mazina? Anyway, whatever street that is on the south side of the property, at fifteen feet in the back, which would be the hemlock side, and then fifteen feet on the two side streets, or the two sidelines, or five on the two sidewalks, excuse me. Yeah, they didn't ask for any relief, they met setbacks. That's not a, because it's in a geologic hazard zone, it's tricky to, tricky, it's, you can ask the geotech guy, hey, what can you do here to move this house around to save trees? And in that case, they'll say, no, I, you can only, you have to do it this way for geotechnical issues. And that's generally not an argument we, I get into with somebody who has a stamp, you know, geologically unstable area like that. We take the word of the geologists in those cases.
Well, I guess what I'm curious about is, there's, there's the footprint of the house and the foundation. And I haven't looked at the building at all at this point, except what I can see as I go around the curve. Is there a restriction on what you can do below the surface of the, for the property in terms of how that wall is being put in to reinforce it?
Yeah, they had to, it's an engineered wall. They, they have to, they have an onsite geologist, and they'll have to do onsite inspections during the pour for the, that retaining wall, I guess you'd call it.
No, my, my point is, where does that wall sit? That, is that wall?
That wall's what we're measuring setbacks from.
I think you're stuck there, Jan.
Well, um, it sounds like, you know, maybe we need to look into this further. I, I have talked with people who are in the construction business, and the feeling there that I understood from them was that the excavation was excessive. And so that's why the tree shouldn't have been damaged, and it was damaged. So this is my concern, is who's, who's supervising this? Who is making sure that a tree that is left to be there, how that's decided, that it's, it's followed through and that the excavation is not excessive? How do we, how do we judge that? Who is, is that you, or who would that be? Joe Baldwin?
Building inspector?
Building Inspector Alton Butler inspects, you know, both the, well, every step, stage of the process. There's the foundation inspection, forms inspection, so there's several inspections there. Because this is a geologic hazard area, they also have their own geotechnical consultant onsite when they're doing that work too. So, yeah, it's, it's being inspected by them and by us.
But not, but no tree person until maybe Joe now would be doing that in the future?
Yeah, conceivably, you know, that...
You're saying that he was negotiating with the city for the contract just for things on city property?
Just for the public portion, portion of the program. So one of the things that I, I think Jan might be getting at here, and I'll skip ahead a little bit. One of the things we could do differently at, at building permit time, that we don't do. Typically, we get a site plan that's been surveyed, that's always required. We all have them identify all the trees on the site, if that's required. We don't require them to identify trees kind of off-site along the perimeter that might be impacted by this. So because we allow setbacks as close as five feet to the side, you know, you're definitely within the range of damaging a tree that could be on the next piece of property, or in this case, on the right-of-way. So it's, it's, it's certainly conceivable that we can approve something that's damaging a tree that doesn't show up on the site plan because it's off the site. So one of the things we could do is require that they identify not only the trees on the property, but also the trees within, take a number, ten feet of the property line, say.
And that would be under, under rulemaking rather than...
That would be a, a new...
And who, why, why does it take other than...
A zoning ordinance. It would take a zoning ordinance.
Public Works or something like that?
No, that would, that would take a zoning ordinance amendment. So if you did that, then staff could say, well, you know, they're, they're, this, this foundation excavation clearly isn't going to identify any trees on site because there aren't any on the site plan. Ah, but it might identify, it might impact this tree off-site. And then we can bring an arborist in if, if that seems warranted, or have, excuse, have the applicant bring an arborist in and explain how you're going to conduct your work so as not to damage this tree. That would be a change in, an ordinance change that could address the situation that Jan's talking about, and some other similar situations that come up from time to time.
In the normal way of doing business, would that get put in a, that, that suggestion get put in a file and wait until the next time that that part of the ordinance is be revised? Or is it something that should be brought up?
It could be, it could come up any time. If, if that's, if that's something you want to consider, we certainly can bring that forward as a standalone amendment.
I, I might see...
Or it could live follow, as you suggested, my, my big file of ordinance amendments that I might do someday if I get the time. It's really your call.
It seems to me, just to make this, you know, simple, maybe not quite as effective as Jan would like to say, but to make the situation somewhat better, the, the code could be changed so that the builder, architect, owner, whatever, would, would have to indicate where the, where the excavation is going to go to. It would be delimited to a certain point, so many feet from X-trees on or off the property. And the trees on the property, I don't think we could do all of the lot back. But the trees on the public side or neighbor's yard is another issue. And it seems that the city would have a reason to know how this is going to be done. The building inspector would have, you know, the goods at that point to say, no, you can't do that.
Yeah. Well, presumably, yeah, presumably we would be able to catch that before we got to inspections. We catch it at the building permit stage, and so look, your, your excavation here is going too close to this tree on the property.
Well, it, it does take a physical appearance, you know, to go there and, when the excavation is going on, you know, to catch it before, you know, it becomes...
Yeah, it might. Yeah, that might be a solution too, you're right.
Uh, let's see. So I come by and discuss with you how we get that on...
You could just direct me to draft something up. Do you want to draft that up for your, in January?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can do that.
Bruce Francis, P O Box 246. Tonight I'd like to speak about FEMA flood insurance. In nineteen seventy-eight, we had the normal imperial measurements drafted by surveyors, hand drawn, and the maps presented to the city and everybody else. Like real estate companies, insurance companies, used these maps to delineate where the flood insurance was mandatory or not. This went through until 2010. In 2010, we all decided that the GIS program, Geographic Information System, along with putting everything onto computers, was going to make things a lot easier to determine where boundaries were, where heights were, what property was in, what property was out of insurance areas. So I believe Dagami, along with FEMA, introduced this in 2010. When the maps came out, I noticed that a couple of our properties and a lot of the streets in the presidential area did not line up with the mandatory insurance. And I pointed it out to Reimar, your previous planner, and I said, Reimar, we got something wrong here. Well, when we looked into it, we found that the metrification of the system to fit the GIS was the further from the reference point, it was placing the imperial system more and more out of compliance with true measurements.
Remind me, or, or educate me very briefly what the imperial system is. I, I thought maybe you were...
Inch, feet and inches.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's feet, you know, twenty-seven feet.
Okay, got it.
And then, um...
So they were using a...
They were using it in a...
An incorrect ratio of feet to meters or something?
No, the original data set in seventy-eight was correct. It's just that when they did the 2010 overlay to meet the new GIS system, they, they found out that their scales did not line up. So consequently, when the overlay was put there, the further you got away from the reference point, the bigger the error. So consequently, people at the north end or along your presidential streets and that, we noticed that there were idiosyncrasies in the information. It did not obviously line up with the data that was produced in nineteen seventy-eight. And there'd been no real remapping to change the data. It had just been changed in format to fit the GIS system. So in about twenty twelve, it's, sorry, yeah, it was twenty twelve, I kind of spearheaded a program for us to have meetings here with the insurance companies and realtors to try and get some corrections done. And as a result, we had Dagami contracted by FEMA to fly the coast because we weren't the only community that was suffering along this. And so it was flown and LIDAR precise measurements made. And I think that it was December of twenty twelve, oh, sorry, twenty fourteen, Mark and I were privy to go down and look at the, a preview of the new mapping. To our astonishment, half the city of Cannon Beach was taken out of the mandatory requirement for insurance based on the new technology and accurate mapping. Also, Breakers Point, which has two buildings via the 2010 information, was taken out in the 24 review by LIDAR. So we thought this should be implemented into the city, have a hearing, negotiate the rates, and get the maps in there so as that the vast majority of people who are laboring under mandatory insurance would be alleviated from it. So here we are, we're going on three years this December. We haven't got anything. There are a lot of people now who are having to pay mandatory flood insurance, and it's not cheap. It is not cheap. You have one of your commissioners that's wrapped up in this. They are paying an exorbitant amount for flood insurance when they are definitely not in the flood mandatory rate zone. So I guess I'm here to plead that perhaps this body could recommend through to the council that we make a plea to Betsy Johnson to put some pressure on FEMA because I'm told that it's held up in the FEMA program. And I am told that it's part of a county-wide procedure because Warrington's dykes need to be recertified. Personally, I feel that each incorporated city has a basis for negotiation with FEMA based on its individual rules by the building code. You set a hundred year plus four feet. That requirement by the building code determines what rate FEMA will set for the insurance, and that's negotiable. So in my mind, it should be that each community should be able to go to FEMA direct and negotiate and get it incorporated back into the city. So I'm just appealing to you to perhaps this, you know, we've waited long enough on this. I think we should push it because there's a lot of people who are really going through hardship. I've had a number of people come to me and say, wow, is there anything we can do to speed this up? And so I'd love somebody to perhaps get Betsy Johnson involved, or I think someone out of Salem. And I just wanted to make you aware. Any questions?
Why, why Betsy rather than Debbie?
Uh, well, Debbie's just lost her husband.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that, and I...
Yeah, Bill passed away.
I asked, I, I, I couldn't, I hadn't heard that, and I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah, yeah, we lost Bill, what, two Saturdays ago. Yeah, yeah, we lost Bill, what, two Saturdays ago, yeah.
Why Betsy rather than Suzanne?
Well, Betsy's helped us in the past, she was across the original submission, and she ramrotted a few things there, let's just...
I just figured, we're talking federal...
Yeah, okay, well...
Where it should be.
Yeah, it's up to you. I'm just pleading that perhaps we can speed the process up, because there are many people who should not be mandatorily made to pay these high rates when they're not in it, you know, and I'd really like to push it, push it along. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, Bruce, we, as I'm president of the Realtors Association for Classic Candy, let's, I'll put in a word also if you think that could be helpful.
Thank you, thank you.
I think we would like to look into what we can do and so forth, is there, would it be appropriate to, I'm trying to think what to call it, in future, to plan a discussion of this under future planning issues or something?
Sure, I can, yeah, I can put together a memo or a staff report on what the status of this is for now, and then you can...
We also happen to have a national administration that views deregulation or the limiting of regulation, an application regulation, pretty high on the list, it seems like. This is an opportunity to put some pressure out there to solve a local problem, would fit right into the politics of the nation.
Yes? Anything else?
Well, I was just curious, when did FEMA say that they were going to be coming out with maps? Because I know they said they were going to come out with them last June, I think.
Yeah, well, they came out with maps, and both Mark and I were privy to it, because, you know, we're both on the planning side of things, and I was representing the county, and Mark, of course, was representing the city, and we got to purview them first, and then went back, and then it was, you know, had the big wand waved over it, and then it got shoved into a cabinet somewhere. What it was supposed to do, in my opinion, was to come back to the incorporated areas for their consideration, and then you hold a hearing where you adopt what the map reveals, take public testimony, and then it's adopted, and then you move ahead with the insurance, you know, being adjusted. That's what, you know, needs to happen. But the facts are there, we just need the implementation, you know, all the work's been done, we just need to implement it, get the process going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the go?